Hello, my name is Rose Riley and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Washtenaw County. Welcome to our online candidate forum for the August 6th primary election. The League is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization that promotes voter education and participation. We host candidate forums to help voters make informed choices. Now, let's hear from the candidates.
Good evening, my name is Donna Snyder and I am going to moderate the forum tonight. It is my honor to introduce three of the candidates running for the Democratic primary for Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, District 5. Justin Hodge, Leah Mills Chapman, and Ronnie Peterson. The Republican candidate for District 5 is running unopposed and will appear on the November ballot. Thank you candidates for participating in this forum. We're now ready for your opening statement, Mr. Hodge, will you begin please?
Yes, well, good evening everybody, I'm Justin Hodge, I'm the county commissioner for District 5 and the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. So I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, these are always a really good time. I'm a lifelong Michigander, a licensed master of social worker and a professor of social work at the University of Michigan where I teach graduate level policy courses. I've committed my entire career to public service and improving the lives of others and that's the perspective that I have brought to the Board of Commissioners since taking office in 2021 and leading the board as Chair since 2023. I'm running for reelection because I believe that everybody in our county should have the opportunity to be healthy, to build wealth and to be safe. No matter where you live in Washtenaw County, you should have access to quality and affordable healthcare and transportation shouldn't be a barrier to using a provider. Should be able to get a good job and provide for yourself and your loved ones as well as build wealth and purchase a home. And of course you should feel safe no matter where you are in Washtenaw County. Your zip code should not determine the opportunities that are available to you, but that has been the reality for so many in our community. That's why I've worked tirelessly to make tangible changes in the lives of our residents during my time in office so far and I hope to continue to be able to do that. I'm really proud of a lot of the work that we've been able to do as I've led the board and our team in making historic investments in the communities and the individuals in our county that need it the most. So looking forward to having a great conversation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Next Ms. Mills Chapman, may we have your opening statement?
Thank you so much Donna, first I'd like to also say thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to share my platform with the voters today. My name is Leah Mills Chapman and I too am running for Washtenaw County Commissioner for District 5. I'm running a grassroots people centered and people honored campaign. As an Ypsilanti native and a current resident of West Willow, I am focused on the reduction of harm that is often imposed on the constituents of the eastern side of this county. Additionally, I'm focused in on the lack of access and inclusion therein. In my earlier years, I was a single mother, I was a single mother for 18 years raising two beautiful daughters and I lived a rather difficult reality. Often incurring hardships from various systems within our county. This reality was very eye opening and the struggles to survive and care for my babies oftentimes came from a space of meager means. And so as I advanced, I entered into the field of social work, I am a clinical therapist and I often had to interface on behalf of many of our constituents within this area. And so it is my desire to move forward in a space to bring them along with me and not solely just have a top down model that governs over them. But one that allows for their voices to be heard, thank you.
Thank you Ms. Mills Chapman. And finally, may we have the opening statement for Mr. Peterson?
There it is, right?
Right.
Yeah, if it's a slip, I don't use this computer off that side. Thank you first of all, let me thank once again the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and thank you for the opportunity, let me present myself. I'm Ronnie Peterson and I'm running for County Commissioner in District 5 and I'm running for the County Board of Commissioners. Let me just say, I have had a history of being an advocate for the community. I'm a born and raised product of Ypsilanti, I've lived in this district my whole life. I was born here as well as my best amendment of my family. I have a deep commitment to serving the people of this community. And let me just say this, I have served on about 15 different board, nonprofit board of directors of this various community from the size of beginning to age 15 years old. I'm deeply committed to serving the public and also delivering services to the community. I believe that the eastern county has somewhat, let me say, a need for even a stronger advocate as they have in the past, we have had good representation. But I think it's need to have even more, I want to be the voice, I look forward to being the voice and I look forward collectively working with everyone to make a success, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And all of your candidates, and now to the questions, we're going to start with Ms. Mills Chapman. I think you've all actually mentioned something about this, that the nine commissioners represent separate districts throughout the county, what is unique about your district?
I would say that the uniqueness lies in the fact that one aspect of this county actually services or looks more so at an urban area. It is a very deprived entity within this county. When we look at Washtenaw, we're looking at the second most wealthy county within the state of Michigan and yet there are those that reside within my particular district that doesn't have access to healthy foods, we have a food desert. We have issues with continued gun violence on a regular basis and over policing within this particular county. We also additionally have issues just with the lack of access to a living wage and to make certain that we have housing situations that are conducive to what is going on with each individual family. Additionally, I would also say that a part of this particular district is a more rural area. So we go from an overly urban space to one that is extremely rural and one that is of more agricultural stance. And so there are a lot of different folk I would say that occurs in these two far reaching entities that will, you know, kind of pull the commissioner of this particular district in various ways. So I would say that making certain that we have equitable practices and practices that are inclusive of all people, of all socioeconomic statuses is something that is very much critical for the one that actually represents District 5.
Thank you Ms. Mills Chapman, Mr. Peterson, same question.
Repeat the question please.
Certainly, what is unique about your district in the county?
I think it's unique, let me just say this, first of all, I think all of the districts are important and I think it's important to have good representation of all of these districts. I think we have a challenge ahead because of economics. Economics has a lot to do with it and it has a lot to do how we prepare the workforce for the future. How we continue to grow our community and grow our community financially and make sure we're strong now and in the future. Make sure we grow the talent and make sure we use resources to bring the talent together and enhance the skill and ability for people to pay for homes. We have to work together in government along with the private sector as well as the nonprofits to address the housing shortage needed and make sure it's affordable. Apartments will not do it for long term, they only it's a short term venture, we got to put people in homeownership. We have to address the issue that we must have a trained workforce, we must do all we can to bring sources together, resources together to make that happen. I have practiced that in the past and seen that at university, community college, work together to strengthen our public education system and make sure our students and our particular graduates are ready to go to work.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Hodge, same question?
All right, well, one of the beautiful things about the district is the urban spaces and the rural spaces. So you get out into a vested township and you have a very rural township there and then we have portions as you get into southern Ypsilanti Township that are also rural, but then you have large spaces that are urban. I think something that's really unique about the district are the neighborhoods like Sugar Brook and West Willow and Galt Village which are really close knit neighborhoods where people know each other. I live in Sugar Brook and I know many of my neighbors and that's, so you have a lot of different housing options in the area if you want to live further out. That's more in the southern part of Ypsilanti Township, but if you want to be in a neighborhood where you feel like you can, you know, you know both people on both sides of you and you can walk down the street or walk your dog and really get to know people. We have a robust neighborhood watch system in Ypsilanti Township that I think has been really useful for neighbors getting to know each other. And that is reflective, I think, with the people that show up at board meetings regularly. But it's, I think, yeah, I would say that that divide between some of the rural spaces and the urban spaces and being able to have choice in the kind of place where you'd want to live in District 5.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Mr. Peterson, we'll start with you for this next question. I think you all mentioned housing, what realistic steps can the county take to mitigate the housing shortage?
I think it's important for the county to come together and facilitate a discussion and ongoing working relationship with those financial institutions that have an interest as well as state and federal officials to assist with most of financial assistance and make sure that we cover some of the soft costs as well as some of the construction cost, building affordable housing. I think we got to scoot away from so many apartments, I think that's only going, I think that's an address to short term, but that's not the long term. People need homes, they need long term homes, a subsidy on apartment complex that maybe only lasts 15 to 20 years will not be a permanent fixture for many of the young families. They need places to stay long term. And I think with nonprofits and corporations as well as financial institution, along with the federal and state government, the county should facilitate the discussion. The county does not have the finances, unfortunately, finance houses, they don't have the means unless they do something special like they have been doing, raising taxes. And that's very unfortunate because her claim to date was not successful in that effort. So I would think that we could facilitate and we should continue to facilitate discussion of nonprofit corporation as well as financial institutions along with the state and federal government to assist in the overall effort throughout the county, not just one key community, not one key city, but all county entities should come together and work collectively to address the housing issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Hodge, same question?
Well, it's an excellent question, we've been talking a lot about housing at the county. I'm very glad to have been able to lead the board into making more than $10 million investments into housing and human services, but we know that's just the beginning of what we need to be doing here. So there are a couple of things that we can do, we've invested in partnership with local governments to be able to build more housing, really to address the affordable housing crisis, we need to increase housing stock. The challenge we run into is that local governments need to want to step up and be able to do that. So we want to be able to convene conversations with local governments, partner with them to be able to help to support the building of more housing. We've done a lot of this through our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and that continues to be a very successful tool for us to be able to get more housing built. For people that are currently struggling with homelessness, we have been actively working to make sure that we have emergency options for people. So we have a hoteling program where we will, if you're in crisis, we will hotel people. But it's really going to come down to building more housing. So if you know about the Dorsey Estates and the city of Ypsilanti, that was in partnership with the county, we're looking to be able to do more investments like that. We really just need to be able to work in partnership with local governments because county government in Michigan doesn't control zoning, local governments do. So that's going to be the key thing is increasing housing and we're willing to invest in that.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Ms. Mills Chapman, same question please.
So when I look at the housing crisis that we have, my mind first goes to Maslow's hierarchy of need. And at the lowest level, Maslow speaks to shelter. And so in our county, we have a homeless situation. We often talk about affordable housing, but if I have no access to a job, I have no access to funding, then I'm not going to be able to have access to this affordable housing model. And so my thought process is, is that we have many entities or buildings within the county that they own. One of which is in Towner, there was the psychiatric services that were supposed to be funneled through there through CMH and that building still sits without any real utility. This building is one that's large enough that can bring our homeless population off of the streets and to have a roof, to have access to dignity, to be able to shower, to be able to use the lavatory and not be criminalized for the basic biological or physiological functioning that happens to all human beings. So first, yes, I believe in housing first models, which means that we're not looking at whether or not they have access to a job and access to any funding. Just on basic principles, we should center the humanitarian look at this first, look at humans first. Make certain that they have a roof, even if that simply means going to some of the abandoned buildings that we currently have on the eastern side of this county in District 5. Purchase them through our health millage that we currently have a significant amount of funding. Purchase those properties, allow them to get off of the streets and out the elements and exist as one with dignity.
Thank you, Ms. Mills Chapman. The next question, actually I think you might have previewed it. This one will begin with Mr. Hodge. Thirty-eight percent of the current community mental health and public safety prevention village, or excuse me, preservation village is allocated to the county. Is the county's share being spent appropriately and if not, what changes should be made?
It's a good question, we've spent a lot of time talking about this village a lot lately. So the split, the 38% that goes to community mental health and there's 38% that goes to the sheriff's office and then the 24 remaining percent is sort of like a rebate for local governments. I believe that we have been using the dollars effectively, community mental health has been very effective in what they do and investing in lots of different kinds of programming. The dollars going to the sheriff's office I think have also been used very effectively in creative kinds of programming like diversion programming, community violence interruption work. So I would say that, and we've been putting significant effort into trying to improve that as we've just recently voted to put the village on the ballot for renewal. We made significant changes to the ordinance over the last couple of meetings to be able to better dictate how the dollars that are allocated to the sheriff's office get used and to create an advisory committee there. So the community mental health side of the village has already had an advisory committee, the sheriff's office part of it will have one now too. And now there would be, it would be much clearer how much funds will get spent on certain things like community violence interruption work or mental health and behavioral health services and supportive housing. So it's, I believe we have made strides to do even better with how the dollars are being spent.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, Ms. Mills Chapman, same question please?
If you would, please restate the question for me?
Yes. Thirty-eight percent of the current community mental health and public safety preservation village is allocated to the county. Is the county's share being spent appropriately and if not, what changes should be made?
Thank you for this question. So I was an actual employee of Washtenaw County Community Mental Health. And as an employee of that space, I saw the allocation of funding. I saw the coupling of funding and the cares dollars that went out and so I was very much in support of that. The crisis management systems that we have, very much in support of that as mental health is something that is extremely critical at this point in time. The area in which that I'm very much concerned about is the public safety area. And so as I was listening to the Board of Commission meeting on last Wednesday, I was a bit troubled when I began to hear things such as the need for flexibility or the allowance to leave room for lots of options. I believe that the community has had some pushback on this flexibility or this very loose measure of governance. There is no, at this current time, there is no oversight to the sheriff's department. Yes, there is a MAC commission, right, or committee for Washtenaw County Community Mental Health, but there's none for the sheriff's department. And so when we're hearing that the purchase of guns is being used by this particular village that is supposed to look so much more at the mental health side of things and, and the supportive housing and the CVI work, there is no need for the militarization of the sheriff's department, there is no need for the continued over policing. And so there's a large concern that I do have when I hear that we're still giving dollars over to the sheriff's department for these sorts of entities. And lastly, I would add that in our rural areas, all of the areas that we say that the county oversees and that this funding should go to and that people are spending their dollars in taxpayer monies are not being funneled out to all areas, including the rural area of Augusta Township.
Thank you, Ms. Mills Chapman, Mr. Peterson, same question. Thirty-eight percent of the current community mental health and public safety preservation village is allocated to the county. Is the county's share being spent appropriately and if not, what changes should be made?
Let me just say that I just want to make a statement around it and really I would hope with more focus would be paid on mental health, mental health services. Particularly those that are in-house and those that, let me say, it's needed to give support system for those workers who come to work every day to provide services for mental health patients and their families. I would say because I've not seen the indebtedness of the expenditures, I don't want to prejudge and basically make my decision from that point. I would like to see more of the local communities working with the county government. We give local money and local contributions to work collectively with law enforcement as well as with the mental health department and their various communities to give, to give mental health services to those communities. We don't get much feedback about those dollars either, so I would like to get more feedback from those particular dollars and more of a strategy overall that the local communities as well as the sheriff department, as well as the mental health department, work collectively together to spend those dollars. They hardly ever hear anything about the local community that they receive about helping them. I would not be judgmental of the sheriff budget because I have not seen his budget and have not viewed his budget, neither would I do about mental health. I know they have some dedicated workers in mental health as well as law enforcement, I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Mills Chapman. The county's four year budget is approximately $500 million, what experience or education prepares you to oversee county finances of this magnitude?
So I am a business owner, I own my own private practice and I cannot say that I have ever had to have oversight over a $500 million budget. I will not, you know, embellish in any way, but I will say that being able to govern my own private practice, to be able to govern my home life, to make certain that people are treated equitably and that funding as a fiduciary is going into the proper places and the proper spaces of which the people are calling and asking for. Again, I would center the needs of the people first. So where I am weak in certain areas, I am committed to learning more so about this particular process. I didn't fail in math class, so I'm able to do some basic mathematical skills such as basic accounting. But I believe that we do have a treasurer, we do have an administrator and so being able to have checks and balances of how things are being brought forth, I am capable in being able to do that, so thank you for the question.
Thank you, Ms. Mills Chapman, Mr. Peterson, same question?
I have been very fortunate to serve on Ypsilanti City Council as well as the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners as well as on the Michigan House Representative, who I served on appropriation, would allocate the dollars and state funding, various programs. I've also been treasurer about five different organizations and also been on about 15 different organizations. My strength is in finance and my strength is in research and I feel very capable, I feel very confident and I did share the ways and means of the Board of Commissioners in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Hodge, same question?
Well, this is an easy one for me because I'm currently doing it, this is my fourth year doing it, second year as Chair of the Board. And I think we've been very successful at the county and fund management. In addition to being, making sure that we're doing our part as the Board of Commissioners, we've also been able to make huge investments in the community. Both with using county dollars and dollars that we receive through the American Rescue Plan. So the experience is I'm doing it right now and it's been going well.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. The next question, Mr. Peterson, I'd like you to begin. The question is, the public comments section of Commissioner Board meetings sometimes lasts hours and does not permit immediate Commissioner response to individual comments. What specific steps do you support to improve two-way communication between commissioners and their constituents?
I believe in, I believe in the people government, I believe that we do do the people's business. There's only rightfully that we should hear the people's comments, no matter how rough it takes, we ran for the job, we endured it and had patience with the public. And we should listen to every comment they make and what's appropriate in terms of responding. I would hope we do more of a category, part of the agenda, part of respond to on the agenda. But it's important to have public input, I think that's one thing that's missing out of government today. It's not a lot of comments from the public, there's not a lot of comments from elected officials. I think that's a mandate that we should have, that we're elected by the people and we represent the people, we should always should be willing to have a dialogue. I would think that sometimes we may have pause in the agenda, if it's there for the majority of the people there for some particular item to make sure they hear the response and not hear it at 11:30 or midnight on cable. I think they need to hear it right there in front of the public. We are here and elected to do the people's business, we should do it in a proper way.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Hodge, same question?
Yeah, so it's challenging because part of it is you have that agenda item where you hear public comment and then we can't respond back until after that. But public comment and responding to public comment isn't the only way that we engage our constituents. One of the things that I got us to add was the ability for people to submit written public comment. So that's a relatively new addition that we have as a way to try to be able to make it easier for people to engage or to get their thoughts out to us. But also all of us as elected officials do coffee hours and speak to constituents outside of the board meeting. So it's not just about, and it's not, everybody can't always make those board meetings, I mean, I think about people that live very, very far on the edges of the county. It's a far drive, for one of the commissioners, I think she has about a 40 minute drive to the board meeting back to, back home. So for constituents that either have challenges with transportation or don't have access to a vehicle, the expectation shouldn't be that you have to come to the board meeting to give public comment to engage. But one of the things, we were trying to make it as easy as possible and we have Zoom as an option, you're able to join by phone. As I mentioned before, I got us to add the written public comment feature. But a lot of that communication with constituents should be happening outside of the board meeting, in a space that's more conducive to dialogue and less of having to listen and then respond right after. So I would say, I think that's a lot of the work that is already happening, organizing town halls, coffee hours and things of that nature outside the board meeting. But I want to continue to be focused on finding more creative ways to be able to help people be able to engage at the board meetings too.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, Ms. Mills Chapman, same question please?
So I often keep addressing humanity first and as I look at the various board meetings and how public comment is being conducted, I'm concerned about the fact and that individuals are being addressed in jest. And so if an individual is coming forward with a very deep concern that they have, I believe that at the particular time that they are addressing it, that someone can at least acknowledge the fact that they were there and they were present. They may not be able to engage in a long fluid dialogue back and forth with them. I do believe that those sorts of conversations are able to be held outside of the actual board meeting. But I do believe that there should be a measure of acknowledgement and or validation to the concerns that our constituents are bringing forth and addressed. So I, outside of that, being able to have additional meetings and bringing the community together and having whether monthly or quarterly meetings with the community, I believe is very much necessary. There are certain subsets of our county that are not being brought into the knowledge of some of the things that are adversely affecting them or positively affecting them. They are just simply not in the know. I have individuals often saying, hey, where do I fit at into this? And so if they are taking out the time to leave their homes or to leave wherever it is that they are coming from to address us, we need to honor them because they are the ones that will put us into office or remove us from office, so they must be honored.
Thank you, Ms. Mills Chapman. The next question, Mr. Hodge, will, you'll begin. What specific policies should the county implement to balance climate change and environment issues with the desire for economic development?
That's a good question, so we are in the process of hiring our climate resiliency officer. So after a long process of going through developing the climate action plan, we're moving forward on that. And certainly we need to be able to stay focused on economic development in addition to addressing the climate issues. I'm excited about the work that our environmental council has been doing and then what the officer will do once the person is hired and in place. There's a second position likely that we'd be filling too in the climate office or the climate resiliency office. So there's already a laundry list of things to do outlined in our climate action plan. In terms of economic development, we are working actively with partners to try to bring in more development into certain areas in the county, particularly in the eastern part of the county where there are abandoned buildings or vacant buildings and that former plant that's been shut down for a long time. We had a really good conversation recently with a potential developer that may look Uh, we had a really good conversation recently, um, with a potential developer that may look to be putting housing there. Uh, so there's a lot we can continue doing around economic development and it shouldn't come at the cost of, uh, us reaching our climate action goals. Um, and I feel really good about our climate action plan and our ability to execute on it.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Ms. Mills Chapman, same question.
As I'm not extremely well-versed in this particular matter, um, I am aware that our unions definitely are that we can engage, uh, conversation with those that are more fluid in this particular subject matter to bring them in to advise us in how to move forward. Um, on the eastern side of the county, as was just noted, was the fact that we did have a plant, the old bomber plant. And if you look at the area directly next to the old bomber plant is West Willow, in which I currently reside. And if you look at this particular area, you'll see that there is a measure of movement where those that are of lower socioeconomic status are being pushed out of this particular area over into the Wang County area. And so as I service various clients that are desirous of remaining here, that's desirous of keeping their employment here, they are also struggling with whether or not they can remain. So as we look at making certain that the environment is very much taken care of, that the ozone layer is not put out too quickly, we also need to make certain that our constituents aren't moved out too quickly. And so that for me is a major concern when we're talking about economic development, that it is not just centered solely for those with degrees that are coming outside of the western portion of the county, pushed into the eastern side of the county because they have more measure of affordability to be able to garner housing there and that those that are of lower socioeconomic status have to be moved out of this county at large. It's not okay. I would not stand for that. As developments are coming about, I will lift up the voice of those that are more marginalized than those that have the ability and the access to move into other spaces.
Thank you, Ms. Mills Chapman. This is, will be the last question and we will start with Ms. Mills Chapman. In your opinion, what are the county's primary responsibilities and services?
In my opinion, the most primary responsibility is to govern and be the fiduciary of all that is underneath their umbrella. So making certain that services are operable, making certain that departments are functional, making certain that there is not wasteful spending that is occurring and that there is oversight. Additionally, I believe that their primary focus should be back to the people, the people that voted them in, sitting with them, listening to their needs and not overlooking them, not functioning from this top-down model, but coming again alongside the people to see what areas of concern matter to them. So although the functionality of a commissioner is, is to engage in the financial responsibilities of the county, it also is to make certain that the people within this county feel like they are a part of the county and can access all services. There should not be this stark disparity occurring within our county. The twenty-three divide that is often talked about is about a wealth gap. It is about the disparity of money. And so it is our responsibility to make certain that access of basic fundamental needs are given to all people in this county.
Thank you, Ms. Mills Chapman. And you mentioned overlooking and I overlooked Mr. Peterson. I'm so sorry. So I, can we go back then to the previous question and for Mr. Peterson to respond to, which is, uh, in relation to climate change and environment issues versus the desire for economic development?
Well, let me just say that I've been honored that in watching the committee function that the county already have in place. And I'm, I'm pleased that much of the discussion has been taking place and I look forward to the work of the new director, uh, that I'm, that I'm hearing it will be taken position pretty quickly. And I'm wait, I'm waiting to hear. Economic development is a, a tool that is so importantly needed in the eastern side of the county. And in any way we could help, let me say, uh, be a part of that in terms of the community overall. I think we would love to be a part of the planning and, and, and part of the, let me say, location, possible locations and various economic opportunities. Uh, but I'm waiting for the work of the committee. I've been very pleased. I've been a very active committee and very pleased with what I've been seeing so far.
Thank you. And while you're talking, Mr. Peterson, would you want, want to go ahead and respond to the question? In your opinion, what are the county's primary responsibilities and services? But this will be the last question.
That's the last question. Let me just say that, that there's no question, the Board of Commissioners have a responsibility. Number one, most important responsibility is the budget. Uh, to make sure that it's a budget that's appropriately adopted, that makes sure we can finance it and afford to pay our employees every day. Our responsibility, I would receive to be, first of all, the obligation to those that are statutory departments that are, uh, elected, have elected officials and to those who carry out duties and responsibility to the public. No question, our mental health department, our public health department and those who we, citizens who rely on every day for services that are rendered for them. And then there are many other, uh, eleven or twelve hundred employees they have throughout the county. I think our responsibility is to them because they dedicated their commitment professionally to provide services. And then those nonprofits that we work with collectively to help the rest, to help direct services directly at the field every day to make sure they open up the doors of their particular facilities and provide services. I think we must come together as a county to begin to discuss priorities though. Money is becoming short, money's becoming tight and we talk about inflation. We're raising inflation too, we're raising taxes. And we're raising them without a plan. We need a master overall plan for the county. And local officials and local government officials need to come together collectively to help us map out that plan, but never losing focus that we have an obligation to the twelve or thirteen hundred employees we have in Washtenaw County Government. And those particular departments who provide those services need our support. And we need to be there for because they're dedicated and committed to the organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Hodge? That same question.
Same question. All right. Um, we often describe ourselves at the county as the safety net for the safety net. I mentioned earlier that we've allocated over, uh, ten million dollars to housing and human services over the last, uh, year and a half or so. And I think that's emblematic of our commitment to that. Uh, we really look at ourselves as a, at the county and trying to make sure that we're uplifting every resident that needs support, particularly the residents that need more support, um, than others. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we've allocated dollars at that, at that level. There's also, uh, that it's been talked about the public health department, um, our community mental health, those really critical services, the services that we provide out of our Office of Community Economic Development, uh, also really critical services. Uh, it's one of the reasons why I'm really happy that we've been able to allocate more than six and a half million dollars to health equity programs, uh, to be able to help our residents, particularly in areas where we have, um, food insecurity uh, or poorer health outcomes, be able to get resources, uh, and access to healthcare that they would not get otherwise. Uh, one of the other things that I'm really proud for us to have started was a financial empowerment center, uh, which allows anybody in Washtenaw County to get free financial counseling, uh, as well as other financial services there. We really want our residents to be able to build wealth. Uh, we want to support our youth and our seniors. We've allocated more than four million dollars to senior services and we're having conversations about how do we do more. Uh, one of the programs I got us to start for youth is a savings account program for, uh, kids in Washtenaw County Public Schools. So if you're a kid and you, uh, you're in public school, you get a savings account for college, trade school, any kind of post-secondary education. Uh, and if you're a kid that gets free reduced lunch, the county puts a five hundred dollar seed into those accounts as a way to try to uplift families that need it more. So really I see our focus on providing, uh, human services and making sure that no one falls through any cracks in Washtenaw County. Uh, and we really are a human service agency.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. So now it's time for closing statements and we will begin with Mr. Hodge.
All right, back to back. All right. Well, thank you again to the League for, uh, organizing this forum. This is a one I'm always, uh, happy to participate in. Um, you know, so much of what I've been focused on during my time in office has been to help improve, uh, health outcomes for our residents, particularly in the eastern part of the county, to help people to build wealth and to increase community safety. Uh, we've done a lot of that and I've had a lot of successes in working with the other commissioners to bring much-needed investment uh, into, into District Five, uh, in the eastern part of the county more, uh, more broadly. I'd say one of the big things is people probably heard about the East Side Community Recreation Center. It's a project that's been talked, um, off and on over the last couple of decades. Our board is going to be the one to be able to get that to the finish line. Uh, so between us working closely with local, um, state and federal partners, we've been able to secure more than, um, thirty million dollars to make that project a reality, which would be transformative, um, for the people in the eastern part of the county, um, particularly because there's so much research that shows that having a, access to, uh, community centers and recreation and after-school activities for, for youth, uh, increases safety and educational opportunities. Uh, was able to get us to make an eight million dollar investment specifically in the four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight zip codes, uh, to address educational disparities and early childhood education programs, uh, housing and homelessness. We allocated millions to community violence and interruption work. Uh, we've had a lot of really good successes, uh, under my leadership at the county and I'm hoping that people will reelect me so I can continue doing the work.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Ms. Mills Chapman, your closing statement, please.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come on this evening. In closing, it is my desire to bring to the Board of Commissioners a more humanistic focus. Not one that continually operates with a Band-Aid of the issues that are occurring here, but one that will actually meet the needs of the people. Not one that's looking at long-term goals where the funding allocations are being centered for ten, twelve-plus years down the road, but for those that need things today. So we're centering my grassroots, people-centered campaign on one that has empathy, one that operates from a space of true transparency and accountability to the people. We need to make certain that as we are moving forward, that we focus on governing our practices in honor and respect of all people, not having disparities or biases against certain populations of people. We need to come together and co-create this democracy and not operate as a dictatorship. It is one that needs to keep the approach of governance centered to an we and not an I. And so I am running yet again as county commissioner for District Five, one that is in the ground with the people that are actually doing the work for the people and will look to continue to do so in this particular office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills Chapman. Mr. Peterson, your closing statement.
Again, thank you. Thank you for the work you all do to bring the information to the citizen that count. Uh, it is important, uh, to have representation that is connected with the community as well as listening to the community. It's important that we address not only the, uh, the issue that's before us today, but the issues we face tomorrow. We must continue to grow as a community collectively together. Uh, that's collected together mean all of us coming together, selected officials as well as the citizens of our community. District Five had a lot of issues, uh, along with the surrounding area, not that it's inclusive or different from anyone else, but unique. We have to gain our, grow our workforce, grow our economy, grow our industry and draw our businesses. And in me and so, we must grow the talent and the skill that needed to be employed in our community. We must continue to improve our roads, we must continue to improve our life paths, we must contribute to the truth, most of all, human lives. And we can do it by strengthening mental health, public health, and then making sure they get the dollars they need to continue to provide the services of those in this community. Take care. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and thank you all for participating in this very valuable session.
The League thanks the candidates and volunteers who participated in today's forum and the community members who submitted questions. Please urge others to view our forums. Most importantly, please vote in the August sixth primary election, whether by absentee ballot or in person.